Good evening. It is now 18:32 or 6:32 on Thursday, July the 5th. If you just do one. Thank you for checking though. And we will call the special meeting to order. The agenda tonight is the pool reopening plan, the district mission statement, and the director vacancy. Finally, the ballot measure for the levy. So, onto the first one. I sat down.
Mr. Chair.
Yes ma'am.
You might want to know who's present and then I believe it's Commissioner Harden who's taking notes for the record. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. Thank you for reminding me. No, thank you for reminding me. Commissioner Harden is taking the notes for this evening's meeting. And present are Commissioner Donna Sue Holly, Commissioner Pat Harden, Commissioner Wendy Singleton, and Commissioner Sean Merrill. Absent is Commissioner Shane Hoffmeyer.
Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. No, appreciate it. Pool reopening. All right, a couple, a week and a half, two weeks ago, I sat down with Commissioner Harden and Julie Leeds from the Foundation.
Foundation.
Foundation, thank you. That was a brain fart. To look at, go over numbers once again to open the pool. And surprisingly, even with drastic cuts, our numbers were still fairly high. To the point that we just can't do it. The consistency is $91,000 for utilities, based on last year's P&L for August through December. Looking at the cash flow that we looked at, that we also have to look at, and the fact that we are in a deficit for November and December, and we can't count on projected income, it was unrealistic to look at raising over $200,000 to open the pool on a part-time basis. So, looking at that, we now need to put all of our efforts into what we can on the plan for reopening the pool. Part of that we're going to do tonight with our mission statement and values.
Mr. Chair.
Yes ma'am.
Sorry, were you moving on?
No, I'm staying on the plan to reopen the pool. Thank you very much. No. Some of the preliminary parts of that plan, and this is, please pop off if I'm forgetting something, we're going to go down a very linear path here that has to do with the ballot, because that's integral to opening the pool. So, it's a combination of both. But the preliminary plan is in November, once we know we have passed the levy, as soon as we know we've passed the levy, we start the ad to run for the director's position. Interview for the director's position two weeks after that, after it's run, and hopefully have a director on higher, on the payroll by mid-December. Also, on December 1st, once we know we've passed the levy, and if we have corrected our deficit spending, hopefully, we will be able to start up the equipment and run the facility for a month. This will help get the pool to temperature, and identify any equipment that needs to be replaced, repaired, or whatnot. Once the director is hired and onboard, hopefully no later than January the 11th, the director, with the help of the remaining staff, will present a schedule. And from that schedule, we can also expect the director to start adding additional employees as we ramp up operations. Some of the notes that I took that will need to be done, and sorry Julie, but there are some takeaways here from you. I need to know how much it's going to cost for backgrounds. When I looked at the P&L, it was, it's got them clumped together, so I don't know, I can't identify individual background checks. We're going to have to do that for the director. I also need to know, please, how much the hiring ads are going to cost us? All right?
Mr. Chair.
Yes ma'am.
Sorry, I'm not trained at undo anyone's good works, but I feel like we're stating these as declarative things, and this board hasn't discussed them?
No.
Okay, so, okay, but I feel like I'm being told what we're going to do, and I'm a decision-maker in what we're going to do.
Totally. And I apologize for the presentation. No, what I-
Okay, but here's my problem is, for example, and I'm not trying to take us off task, I'm actually trying to direct us to what I think the work is that needs to be done. So, for example, I believe that we need to change not only the director position, and I know I've discussed that with you personally before, but I think that we as a board need to talk about that. I think we need to talk about changing our hiring process, which includes things like the way that it is now, and I apologize if I'm, I'm not trying to hijack anything.
No, no, do it.
But, for example, we are currently required by our own policy to advertise in print certain things that, I mean, it's, the world has changed and our policies have not, and so I think we need to take a look at those processes ahead of time, because basically what we've done in the past is, we have become bound by our own process.
Yep.
And we have not yielded the results that we could have if we had done something that was more flexible and more current. And so, I'm not, my apologies, I'm not trying to disrespect the discussion, but I think that, part of what I'm trying to say is, I think there is a larger discussion that needs to be had.
Could I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Let the chair finish his timeline that he's come up with, and then each of us have other things in the timeline. Because those things, I agree with you completely, and those things are things that we should be doing well before the November levy, because we have time to do it. So, does that make sense to do it that way?
It does. I think I just have to say, I'm, my apologies if this offends anybody, but I feel like we should have something in front of us. I'm not someone, I'm a visual person number one. Number two is, if all this stuff was discussed weeks ago, I don't know why I don't have something in front of me. I feel like I'm being read to. Like, I'm sorry, I am sorry Chairman, I'd like, I'm not trying to be, I'm just, I'm frustrated, because I'm here, and I don't feel like I should be, have to be here right now, and I want us to be as productive as possible, and I'm literally being read to.
Yes.
Okay. So, I hope that we can, for future meetings, we can change our operating procedure, because this is not going to work.
So, what I want to do tonight-
Okay.
-is actually put it on paper.
Okay.
So, the, and my presentation was poor. So, what I'm going to do is read what I've got so far. I need the input from you, because I, like you said, there's five of us, we need all five of us.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And then we're also going to need feedback from people outside.
Absolutely.
My goal is, and I should have stated this first, so that's where the frustration comes in, I'm sure, and I apologize, is to have a plan for all of us to have on paper, for community partners to have on paper.
Correct.
For everybody to review, for us to agree upon, no later than our next meeting.
Okay.
And that way, it's a plan to work, that we can present, that we're working from.
Okay, that's great, and I appreciate you stating that.
Yes.
I realize, it sounds like that was already in your plans, but I just felt like I was being led along a path, and I didn't know where I was going, and I'm not cool with that, so, thank you.
No, totally.
It sounds like we were actually in agreement, I just didn't know it.
Nope.
Okay, that's fine.
All right.
Thank you.
No, and I'm writing these down, because if I don't write them down, I'll forget. So, if you get more of them, you know. Julie, can you let us know how much those cost though, for the background checks and stuff? And then also, how much does Manny cost for contract review? Because that's one of the other things we're going to need to think about.
I think it's a per hour thing.
Still?
I think so. But check that, but I, what's sticking in my head is $250 an hour, but I might be wrong.
We have an agreement with them of some sort, I don't know what the amount is, but I mean, that was what we agreed to, is because we chose not to retain, like, put them on a retainer, that we have some fee we agreed to.
It's prelim hire, December, January. One of the things we need to do also, as we're moving forward, is the 2019 budget needs to be in by December. I feel no need for us, and we need board feedback on this also, to present a budget prior to the levy. It makes no sense if we don't know how much money we've got. We have till the end of December to have it in, but I think we need to be ready to go.
We have until the end of November to have it in.
I thought it was the end of December.
It's the end of November, yeah.
It is the end of November.
And I, here's what I would recommend, is that we actually come up with two budgets, one, the levy doesn't pass, one, the levy does pass, so that we can show the voters, it's like, here's what we're going to do with the money, which we think we know how much that money is, and we should, one, be able to, and we should have a budget.
For the levy.
Yes. Because the levy is so close to wanting to anyway, to then wait, you know, and throw it together in three weeks, it's like, yeah, that doesn't sound smart to me. But, that's my, you know.
I agree.
Are we not even saying, yes, let's do that?
Yes. One of the things I also had on here as part of this, is the three actions that I wanted to bring up, and then add to, was start election plan. That starts with the levy, what do we call this, Commissioner Holly? The levy language.
Oh, right. The levy language.
And the resolution.
And the resolution.
Yeah.
So, we'll work on the language and the resolution tonight, which we'll pass at the, which we'll discuss and hopefully pass at the next meeting. From that, we can build, hopefully, a chamber presentation, a presentation which we can use to speak to the chamber, the council, the school board. One of the suggestions I had was an Aswe skipper and the N9 director. Also, community groups, and there's various ones out there, I wrote down a few, I'm sure you guys can come up with many more than I can. Get with our community partners, volunteers for signs, and for us to go door-to-door also, if we can. To do all this, we're going to need a budget for it, and that was one of the things that Commissioner Holly mentioned. We have a budget, and we, it's one thing we don't have a lot of, so we're going to have to be creative with that. Those were the big-ticket items that I had. Now I need to turn this over to you all, to get your feedback, such as redoing the PD for the director, redoing the hiring policy, and any other items you may think we need to put into this plan. What else you got?
Well, I just kind of did a skeleton of parts of the plan, because I think the way, and I might have a slightly different way, and I'm okay with whatever way works, right? Whatever succeeds, it doesn't have to be my way, but I just kind of went through and basically made a list of things like, what is, you know, for example, and it's all over the place, it's not in any particular order, things like what's our pricing strategy? So, again, in this reopening document, we were talking about what's our pricing strategy? What's our approach to reopening? Because I actually think that there is a way that we can talk about, so I know I've talked to people a little bit individually about understanding what our relationship is with the foundation, you know, and putting that in writing in this plan as well, but looking at backward scheduling. So, what you're, what you're doing is forward scheduling.
Gotcha.
And, and so, if we, if we felt like there was money to work with, we might be able to backward schedule a little bit, and, and look at how much money do we have, and how much runway will that give us between, basically, I think April is the date that, you know, that we know is pivotal, because that's when, if the levy were to pass, that's when we get our first big check. So, I think, I think stating the approach, even if it's not the one that I'm suggesting, I think stating the approach, it just makes sense to do that somewhere in there. Assumptions, just listing our assumptions, because that has gotten, that has caused confusion in the past, even among people on this board. Key players and relationships, identifying who it is that we need to work with. I think some of that you've already done in a slightly different way, and again, as long as it's in there, I don't, I don't care what we call it. Obviously, a budget, a schedule, staffing plan and hiring, some of which you talked about, but some of which will also be the actual staff. And this can be to a certain level that I think we have to try to help guide it, because we can't just bring in someone new and then just go, yeah, good luck. Hey, but we're, our hands are off it. Like, we have to have an idea about how it can work, if we can expect anyone else to make it succeed. Contingencies, that just is because that belongs anywhere. Risk management, so again, understanding what the major risks are with whatever our approach is, and how we would, what we would do if something that happened that we didn't want to happen. Sorry, tracking and monitoring, how are we going to determine whether our plan is succeeding or not? And what do we do about it if not? Milestones. So, as we look at a high level, like, so there's a lot of information in this plan, and I realize it's probably more detailed than most people are ever going to look at. If it, if it's done the way I want to, to be honest, most people aren't connected, they're going to be bored by like page four, right? But, but something that says, here are the milestones that tell us, that tell us, as well as our partners and the public, how are we, how are we doing? Communication plan. Program offerings, I just kind of put that as an aside, because there are some people who aren't going to care about the rest of it, they're just going to want to know, what are you going to offer? And, and part of it, understanding even a rollout potentially, assuming that we're not going to do everything on the first day, here's how we would look at ramping up different programs over time. So, foundation relationship, which I already said, you know, one of the open questions I know that we had was, can we, how can, can, do we know that we can legally accept money? How does that work? So, it's not just that component, but it's also, what's our ongoing relationship going to be? How are we going to check in with each other? How are we going to ensure that our, that we have common goals? And, you know, all of that, that kind of sets, I think sets that foundation, foundational part of moving forward together. Community outreach portion of it. And then, I think the, okay, the last one was, was revenue sources and/or news streams of revenue. Just trying to understand where, where are we able to actually make money, not just provide service? And, and again, some of those might be thin, and they might not, we might not be ready for them, but that's what I came up with in about 10 minutes, so. Hope that helps.
That's great. Thank you. Done soon.
Yeah, to go with Commissioner Singleton said, although, some of the stuff I'm kind of like, I don't really understand what that is in relation to us, but I'm sure she'll explain it. But, the handbook, we want it, we need to get it finished, and that's part of the focusing on, especially on the director's, his PD, but also, let's, let's use this opportunity to change the system if we feel like we should, and that, you know, because we've been, we've been sitting here looking at this pool and how it operates for several years, and we'll be probably better equipped than a new director, who's going to come in, and the handbook as it exists is really old, so, we're going to have to make that change in this lull period that we, sort of a lull period, it's not going to be a lull because we're going to do that, but we can do it. So, the handbook should be finished. And I can't think of anything else, let's see what you guys have there, but it's good. I'm glad we have a timeline, sort of.
I was just wondering about, we had talked before about approaching the city with our plan and budget, and seeing if they wanted to assist. Has that been just-
Last number, we're working on the plan, I'd say, right now. Anything to reopen the pool, other than what we've got? We've got a, correct me if I'm wrong, unless something happened last meeting, I apologize, but I don't think, the last we heard from the city was, it was about $100,000, which leaves us well short of what we need to reopen the pool.
Yes, that would be true, if we, if the $100,000 is credible. Is that-
That's the last I heard. I can reach out to, if you'd like me to, I can reach out to the city tomorrow and ask.
Well, I think that if there is hope to reopen the city before, you know, before next April, that it's our job to, to do whatever we can to-
I agree. Last time I talked to Mayor Severns, he said they had no interest in running the pool. They'd help where they could, but what he had mentioned with his staff there was far less than that. So, I'm not held hopeful, but I will reach out if you would like me to, to Mayor Severns again.
I just think before we give up on it, we should make sure it's not possible.
Okay.
Well, I think you can-
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair.
Yes ma'am.
I think what I, if I, if I am interpreting correct, part of it is, is let's not leave money on the table. If there's money on the table, then let's see, let's not, I understand that there are, that we think that there are challenges, and certainly are, you know, part of when we were looking at, hey, we're going to go in the red in December, potentially, like, you know, that that's a frightening thing, and it's kind of the, well, we can't, we can't serve both things at the same time, we have to fix one problem and then fix another, but I think part of it, and I think, I think it's like, let's not leave the stone unturned. Even, even if we thought it was too late to go and ask, let's still do the ask. Obviously, we need to have the things in order for us to do the ask, though, too.
Yes, I just, I, that's exactly what I, let's not, let's not just forget about it and not do it, if, if there is anything, you know, if we could, even if that pushed our opening up to January 4th. You know, whatever, whatever, obviously, I am not in favor of putting our financial future in jeopardy by acting prematurely, but I don't want to just leave, I don't think it's a, I don't think I could say, leave an offer, no.
Right, right.
But, leave the chance.
Okay. How would you feel about putting the plan together, discussing the plan at the next meeting, and then reaching out to Dr. Gibbons, Mayor Severns, the county, and the base after that? Do you want to do it before then?
Well, I think, well, I think that we could do it the next meeting, but if we do it the next meeting, I think before the meeting, we should have, you know, like we have a rough draft of what we want to put on the ballot. I think we should have a rough draft of what we want to present, so that when you, when we come, we can say, yes, I love all of this, except that I don't agree with that.
The presentation materials.
Yeah, yeah.
In addition to the, in addition to a plan.
Well, yes, I consider the presentation materials part of the plan.
So, can you, I'll tell you what, so, would you be willing to take on the presentation part for a plan for reopening the pool?
Well, I don't even know for sure that I would know what exactly that means. You mean how to present it to?
No. I thought you were suggesting that we put together some presentation work-
Yes.
On what you see the vision for the, for us reopening the pool, correct?
Yes, and it needs to have our budget in there.
Okay.
At least, you know, a rough, realistic budget.
So, do you want to work on the budget then? A realistic budget for reopening the pool for next meeting?
Well, I guess I would have to work on that with Julie, right? And we, we, you have done a great deal of that already, right? So, yes, I would be willing to go over that.
Awesome. I'm going to, I'm going to put, because I'm not going to throw anybody else under the holy air grenade, I'm going to put together a plan as we discussed. I'm hoping you want to do this with me? Would you?
Sure.
Okay, because I was, I was thinking something as simple as a five paragraph order, don't laugh, because that's what I know. It's short, sweet, and to the point, and gives the board's intent. And so, I think between the two of us, because you were looking at something a little more encyclopedic, I think between us, we can produce something decent.
Sure, no, absolutely. Well, I think there's, I think there's something to be said for an executive summary, I think that's great, because I think that's what some people will want to see, but the fact of the matter is, is that if, if we don't have a long plan, then we don't have a, then we don't have a plan. Meaning, like, because it's the, I can tell you, you know, I can tell you the little part of it, right? But like, you don't ever see like, the epis, you don't ever see like, a commercial for a television show without there being a whole show, right? So, you're like, oh, I just got the little snippets, that looks interesting. Right, but there's a whole show that goes along with it, and I'm not, I'm not trying to-
I get you.
And, and so, and so I think we have to put our, we basically have to, the rubber has to meet the road for this, and so we have to show that we have done due diligence to have a plan to reopen, and, and this is, this needs to be a new process, our new process. And unfortunately, we don't have anyone else to do it, and that, meaning, you know, that's the, is this what I dream about doing at night? It is not. I know, I know. But, and I think for me, parts, parts of this, my expectation would be that we would farm it out amongst the five of us.
Yes.
Okay, because, because that's going to, and, and, you know, and the staff.
And the community partners.
And part of, I mean, absolutely. I mean, that would be, that would be fantastic.
The more eyes, the better, yes.
Absolutely. I think that would be great, because again, part of it is, is we want a document that not only we're proud of, but that people can buy into.
So, besides the statements that we've read off, and the ideas we've thrown out there, and your idea also, are there any other ideas that we need to think of before we take this and incorporate it prior to our next regularly scheduled meeting?
I don't know where, sorry, I thought of two more things based on what, it's her fault, it's Commissioner Holly's fault, but I did think of two other, I think it's to-do's, but I don't know that they, they don't need to be part of this plan, but I think two other to-do's is, one is, I think we, it's, it's, it's hot time, I've always wanted to say that, and now I have, that we review the resolutions, because there is, there is, we know there's garbage in there, let's, like, so, so this is under the guise of, let's clean some house. The other one is, I think it probably behooves us to go through, and even, I want to, I want to tour this building, and meaning, like, where is, where are things kept, are there things we can get rid of? Where can they go? Again, this is our opportunity, and maybe some of that's already been done, I don't know, but I would like to know the dispositioning of things in this building, so like, you know what? If we're going to get, if our expectation is a fresh, fast start, then let's prepare for it. That was it.
I volunteered to do the resolution review, I've been wanting to do that for like, three years. I'll just do it, if I can. I need to get with you and find out when, when I can get in, or just define them all, and then I can take them away with me and review them home, so I'm sorry, that was after I forgot.
Oh, I'm just, do it now, yeah.
Yeah.
Let's do it. All right, so you're going to do the resolution review, that takes one off the list. Thanks. So, our next meeting is the 26th, so we will decide when to meet afterwards, to put this together. Have a plan to, I think it's realistic to have something to, Julie, know later than Friday the 20th?
Yeah, I think it probably, if, what state do we think it's in at that point? Because if, sorry.
I think it's, I think it'll be ready for review for our meeting on the 26th.
It probably needs to be before that, because I think, you know, part of what we're asking each one of us to do is to be mindful about it, and I think that could take a little bit of time.
Look at the calendar.
I would say probably no later than the 18th, just, and then, and then if we could get it, I mean, hopefully, it's just a pass-through, because I don't see why, you know, hopefully, other than, you know, everyone collaborating on their stuff, I would think the 18th, because then we have a week to look at it, and, and then we could, and/or we could decide whether it's in the regular meeting, or whether it's a, it's a separate meeting to go through and talk about the changes, because that's, I mean, you know, it's, that can be an arduous process. My goal is not to make it long and awful, my goal is for it to be comprehensive, whatever that means. So, some of these things might not even be-
I like it.
Something of substance, but it's the, let's, let's include more things and better out the stuff that doesn't pan out, rather than starting with a blank sheet of paper.
All right, so we will have that to, our goal is to have, for Commissioner Singleton and Commissioner Merrill to have the first draft of the plan to admin on the 18th of July, so it can be sent out to the rest of the commissioners by you. And we will place that on, for review, for the next regular scheduled meeting on the 26th. All right, anything else for pool reopening plan?
I think that's-
Okay. All right, district mission statement.
Oh, he's either wrong, sorry, he's not-
The resolution, the resolution is not the district mission.
Right, this is awful. And I'm like, oh, it's not.
Comments, questions? Comments, questions, suggestions, or motions?
It is boring, but I think it is complete, yeah, I think it's fairly complete.
Should we start off with health and wellness, because that's what makes us different from everybody else. So, under our values, put the health and wellness first, then community, then fiscal responsibility. Not that fiscal responsibility is not really important, but it is, but I think health and wellness is what separates us from, you know, everybody else. Does that make sense?
Can do that. So move health and wellness, then community, then fiscal responsibility, correct?
I think so.
Okay.
It's a little, it's a little long for my taste, but I completely understand and support it, so I can't really pick it apart and say, this should go, because I, like, yeah.
Yeah.
Other than that Oxford comma.
Yes.
That I really want in there, yeah, you know, I have to say.
What? Oxford comma?
Yes, after health and before the and.
And after programs, that book before service.
Ah, right.
Yeah, I know, right? Mm-hmm.
Oh, oh, I see where you're talking.
I would make those changes.
I hate when they change English rules, because we were taught.
I know. Well, I was first taught that you put the commas in, and then I heard that you didn't. See, that's when you get this, oh, you've gone through a series of...
Changes?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we adopt the proposed mission statement as written.
And when the health and wellness changed, moved up?
It's a mission statement, that's not a mission statement.
Oh.
A mission statement's just the top part.
So, so either someone seconds it, or it dies.
So, seconded.
So we have a motion to, yes, accept it as written with the commas and a second discussion. I am flustered. Discussion, any further discussion on the mission statement up top?
That looks exactly like what I sent to you, and I, but I copied it from like, some place in California, so, did everybody send you the same thing?
No, people sent me different things, and I took something from everybody.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
But I think it's perfect.
Thank you. You all did, we all did well. Any other discussion? All in favor of accepting as written with the commas?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Our values as part of the mission statement.
So this is where I struggle a little, because I, I think fiscal responsibility, I think that's fine, and I think it's something that's necessary within our community right now, meaning, I, I believe that we must be transparent about that, I, I believe we have to, I'll say lead with it, but I don't think it needs to be first, but I, I struggle with, and, and I, I typically try not to knock something down without having to replace it, but, but I feel like it doesn't quite, it's, I feel like that part isn't quite there yet, and it's, and it's something about strategic budgeting process, okay, isn't it really about, and, and is where I don't have the words, but, but isn't it really about looking forward, isn't it about, really about looking forward to not only maintain what we have, but to grow our district responsibly with the needs of the community, or, you know, and I don't know how you say that, that's where I, I know I haven't really contributed a lot to this process, because part of it is, is I was like, I think it looks fine, but then it was like, yeah, this is where I struggle with, I think everything else is good.
Strategic planning and budgeting process?
Well...
Or is that too soon?
Well, I, I think, maybe this is, part of what I struggle with is, there's, there's a part of me that looks at that, I think the understanding of our local economy is super important, like, and I think that one is great, so whoever came up with that one, totally kudos, because I think that's really important, but the other ones are like, yeah. So, and, and I realize that we go, well, right, but it's not necessarily a given, and it's like, but it should be, and, and that's where I think it's the, okay, so really, what you're saying you're gonna do is what you actually should be doing anyway. And, and I don't know, maybe I need to just like, take a step back and go, okay, but it's one of those things that, like, when people say like, well, to be honest, oh, okay, so you weren't being honest before you said that. In this case, like, we are gonna utilize wise spending practices, oh, so you weren't doing that before, because you didn't say you were, or it wasn't important to you, and I'm not, it, it always has been to me, but I'm not, I'm not saying that to like, ooh, look, anyway, see, I'm getting muddled here, because I'm trying to figure out, what do I think it should be, and that's where I'm struggling a little bit.
So I put it out there as more of, these are our core values, and these, we need to let everybody know that the board, the staff here should be doing wisely and great, like you said, a lot of that's, even in our OFA office, that we all took.
Right.
It's already there, and that's, that's where some of it came from, and, you know, not reviving the wheel, so, that's what, you know, that's what, that's what I did.
Yeah.
Can we take the values home with us and think about them, and then go on them the next, or, you know, decide something on the next regular meeting?
Yeah, that, that would be great, I apologize for holding up the process.
Play next time.
You're right, because I would like time to think about it, because there's gonna be things, I just have them all in my head of, what do I think the values are, because they might come out a little differently, like, the one you suggested is really good, and I don't know how to word that either, but, and I might come up with something my, on my own, that's different.
There you go.
Sure. I, I think that the fiscal part is good, because even though we have, I don't, I mean, hopefully, well, we have been trying to be as fiscally responsible as possible, just like we've tried to understand the local economy, and we've tried to, you know, promote fitness, those are not new things, this is not new things, it's just, this is what we're committed to, so, but I, I, you know, thinking about it, you know, we might come up with something great.
But it does help when you're trying to make a big decision, to pull out the list and say, so, where on this list does, you know, Plan A fit? It doesn't, or, versus Plan A and Plan B, Plan B fits in with these values, Plan A does not. And that's, that's why you, you write these down, because otherwise, you know, you go off on these crazy drunken streets.
Not that, not that we've ever done that. For example.
All right, so we'll table the values until the regular public meeting in July.
So everybody remember to think about this, and come up with your changes.
And also for comments from the public.
Thanks.
All right, yes, ma'am. Director vacancy, we need to find a way for, not only for a, to have some redundancy with our bookkeeping, but we need to address the director's vacancy. So, one of the nice things, at the cash flow projection, the nice thing was that we did have the director on here for the first couple of months, but then it was gone for the rest. So this, as we look at the director's vacancy, one thing we need to be mindful of as we discuss this is that we are in a limited cash flow operating budget right now. So, thoughts, comments, and your opinions on the director's vacancy?
I liked your suggested timing to, you know, let it get passed, and then we start the ads, run the positions, get him hired by mid-December, so he's working, he or she is working by mid-January. But, what that means is that we have to have done all of our work on getting the PD rewritten, and that's probably what we probably want to do first, I would need to, do, Commissioner Singleton, would you work on that with me, and we could come up with a draft?
Sure.
Because we've talked about it, and so, two of us will come up with the draft for the straw man, for everybody else to be killed, and...
Or accept lovingly.
Yes, yes, as a matter of fact. And we can absolutely have that for the, the August meeting, is that time enough, or do we need to have it for the July meeting, do you think?
I think the August meeting is nice enough.
And we'll have that, get that out to everybody, at least the week before, if not earlier, so that people have a chance to look at it. And when the PD will also be, that will include salary, where we, what we want to do, that, stuff like that.
Julie, I'm sorry you interrupted, could you please send me the hiring policy, the resolution for the hiring policy? I'll work on that one.
Is that a resolution, or is that part of the...
I think it's part of the handbook. I think, you're right, it is bylaw.
Yeah, I think it's in the bylaws, especially with the director.
I will come by and get the bylaw, could, could you just copy it for me?
Yeah.
So I can pick it up and scan it when I get home, and then...
So you're gonna do that one?
I'll do the hiring policy. And I'll have that by August also.
I think, Mr. Chair, I think there's probably some overlap in terms of what we would be trying to do, but what we can, we can coordinate that outside of, meaning, not make it into a meeting situation.
Okay.
We can figure out how to do that.
While respecting the open public meetings act, we can coordinate any overlap.
There you go. Nicely put.
Let's hear it. All right, I'm done, mic drop, I'm out. Anything else? I apologize, Commissioner Harden, anything else for the director vacancy?
Well, the only thing is, if we, the chance happens that we can open the pool sooner, we need to hire a director.
And if we get it done by August, that should address, would you agree?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Just for clarification, I wanted to be sure that there wasn't a misnomer, so when I talked about April being a critical milestone, what I mean is, that's when we get our first big check, but I think that the, that the hope or the understanding is, is that we would, we would find a way to open sooner, regardless of whatever financial support there was. I just wanted to be sure, like, that our full expectation is to be open as soon as possible, part of what we will be outlining would be the method by which we would determine when we can open, and, and the plan would help us identify what partners are, and whenever those, those things are gonna be dynamic, but part of it is get it down, and then when it changes, hopefully, it's always good news, right? Hopefully, it's a good news change that says, yeah, we got this, we, this means we've got this much more, so, so I think it's all really positive, I just look at that April date, because that's for us, a fully functional support, you know, amount.
Yes.
So, okay, I just, I wanted to clarify that, because I, I felt like maybe I had pushed the direction, pushed the conversation in the wrong direction. Thank you, sorry.
No, it's a good point, and to further, further, I think, give you, to address the issue that you brought up, I can send an email to Dr. Gibbon and Mayor Severance outlining what we're doing, our plan forward, between now and August, the July meeting, so that there's communication going on now, and not till then.
Yes.
I will share that with, the only person who will share that with is Commissioner Holly, and I ask that you share that with the base skipper and the N9 director.
Okay, when is that? Is there a date?
There's no date.
Oh, okay.
But I'm gonna send an email after tonight's meeting about our plan to put, develop a comprehensive executive summary and plan forward for opening the pool, along with Commissioner Harden's, you know, proposed budget, and the timeline, that we plan on looking at it at the end of July, and I'll send it out to Mayor Severance and to Dr. Gibbon, and I ask that you address the, because I can't violate the Hatch Act, I ask that you, you reach out to the skipper and to the N9, and I'll provide you those emails.
Okay. All right, yes, I can do that.
Okay, thank you. All right, ballot measure for the levy.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So, you have two pieces of paper that I gave you, scribbled every one, that's what the resolution wants, but first, let's talk about what we want the words to say, or actually, we have never actually said as a body, yes, we want to have, put this on the ballot, so, anyway, so, what you have with colors on it, the red is, the additions or the changes, that's what I want it to say, there's a couple of green ones, I think we should delete that, because for some reason, the county changed the title of our ballot thing to North Wouldbe Park and Recreation District, Recreation Program, Maintenance and Operation Levy. I don't know why they put Recreation Program in there, we did not, so I would just delete it and call it the North Wouldbe Pool Park and Rec District, Maintenance and Operation Levy. And then, putting Pool in, obviously, where, because our name has changed, and then, we're not following an expiring levy, although we are, but it's a year later, so I think we should delete that phrase, and then, the question is, do we want 17 cents or 18 cents, or some other number? 17 is what we had, and I know we were talking about going up to possibly 18, but, we went to seven, we stayed at 17, so, maybe that's what we should do. And then, the, and I just changed the year, so I think they, six consecutive years, it starts in 2018, because as soon as, is it as soon as the election is done, that's when we're, it starts, and then, they don't start collecting it until, you know, so 2019 through 2024. And then, the resolution number will be, have we had any resolutions this year? Have we? So this will be resolution number four or five? I'll double check. All right, do that for me. Well, I'll give this to you for typing up, and then, so, once we get the words, so, does anyone want to make, well, okay, I would like to make a motion that we approve the wording of this, with the green stuff deleted, and the red stuff as I have written, so at 17 cents for six years.
So we have a motion for the resolution for the levy?
Not the resolution, this is for the, the wording of the...
The ballot measure.
Yeah, the ballot measure.
So this is the wording for the ballot measure, so we have a motion to approve the wording for the ballot measure with the red as accepted and the green as deletions, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, discussion.
I think the one thing that I would just, I, I hope that we have more discussion about the amount, so for me, I'm, I'm comfortable at this moment saying yes to everything except for that amount, just bearing further discussion.
Here, here's the problem, we, this has to go into county by the first of August.
I know that.
Okay.
I, I understand that, and, and we have a regular meeting between now and the first of August.
Yes, we do. Are we gonna have an opportunity to then get it signed, knowing that there's a difficulty getting in here and getting stuff signed? That's my impression.
I'm, I'm positive that if people's jobs were on the line, and the, the critical nature of the activity, I, I don't know that we really do have a problem, meaning, if we leave things open and loose, then it seems like it's not a big deal.
This is a big deal.
But I think additionally, I just want to say, and if we're gonna have that discussion now, that's fine, I would prefer that all five of us have the opportunity to have the discussion, which is why I'm asking, like, for me, I'm fine with everything on here except for the amount, and I'm not saying that that's not the amount I want, all I'm saying is that I want us, a full board to have a discussion, and hopefully, I mean, a majority has to agree, but hopefully, we're all on board for the same thing. So, that's, that's, that's my only apprehension.
Okay.
Commissioner?
I agree with what you just said.
Then I make a change to my motion, that we approve it as written, or as done here, with the amount to be later decided on or approved.
So we have an amendment to the motion, to leave the amount out for further discussion at the regular scheduled meeting on July 26th? Do I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Obviously, don't need them this week, but I'll need them next week. Thank you very much. And what I'll do is, I'll rewrite the resolution so that it's ready to go for next month's meeting.
This one?
This month's, thank you very much. This month's meeting. I told you, one and done. So, we can have that done immediately, and then taken to county the next day.
Cool. And I'll even, I'll make sure to take it to the county.
I'm off that day, so if you wanna go, you can go.
I'll enjoy it, you go.
You got it. Thank you. All right, that pretty much sums up the agenda for this evening's meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we adjourn this meeting. Seven?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all for coming and for agreeing to take on this.
7:44 PM.
And it's his 7:20.